On to our meeting tonight. It says six o'clock on my phone, even though the wall clock is a couple of minutes behind. So we're gonna go ahead and get started. It is six P M. On November twelfth. And this is the planning commission meeting. We'll begin with the pledge of allegiance led by Jill Temple.
To the God of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We'll now go to our roll call, starting on my left.
John Lyons, no conflicts.
Matt, we all right? No conflicts.
Jill Temple, no conflicts.
Lisa Jensen, no conflicts.
Melissa Kendall, no conflicts.
Daniel Gonzalez, no conflicts.
And Alan, no conflicts.
And Jonathan Hill, no conflicts. Before we begin our first item, I'd like to read a statement on the decorum for the meeting. Although this is a public hearing, only the presenters and those presented by the commission invited by the commission may speak or ask questions unless otherwise invited by the chair. Please wait to speak until called on. When speaking, be sure to speak into the microphone so the record is clear. Please start by stating your name and city of residence for the record. Please limit side conversations as they interfere with the audio recording. If you need to have a conversation, please step out of the chambers. Please do not attempt to interrupt or speak over others. Intimidating or threatening speech or behavior will not be tolerated at any time. Please refrain from clapping, cheering, booing, or being otherwise disruptive at any time during the hearing. So with that, we will move to our first item of the evening. Item one, the Provo City Council proposes a general plan text amendment to appendix E. Parks and Recreation Master Plan to clarify intent for city-owned land around Slate Canyon Park. And I think Deanne will be presenting that. Excellent.
Good evening. It's good to be with you. This is my first opportunity to meet everyone here at the planning commission meeting because I'm newest planner here at Provo City. So good to be with you. For this first item on the agenda, I'll just introduce a little bit of the background on the general plan regarding the parks and recreation master plan that's contained in appendix E. And then I will turn the time over to Kevin Martins from the city council office, and he will go through an explanation of the proposed text amendment. The current general plan that was adopted by the city council in two thousand twenty-three includes guidelines for balancing land use and development with preserving open space, fostering better resilience, and limiting development in hazardous areas such as the wildland urban interface along the foothills. The Slate Canyon Park area falls within that zone. And it is susceptible to hazards such as wildfire risks. It poses significant challenges to the city in terms of potential development because limits on the feasibility for providing and maintaining roads, utilities, infrastructure, just due to the topography and the geologic constraints of being in the foothills. Language in the plan currently calls out allowing for some single-family development to be considered around the Slate Canyon Park area for the purpose of helping to fund park development. And this has become quite an area of concern and discussion among the city council. So at this time, the applicant Kevin Martins is proposing a change to the language within the Parks and Recreation Master Plan for the Slate Canyon Park section. And you can refer to exhibit A on attachment one, which is found on page one of the item one staff report. But with that, I will now turn the time over to Kevin to explain the proposed text amendment.
Thank you, Deanne. It's also my first time presenting at planning commission, so nice to meet you guys. So in chapter seven point one of the Parks and Rec Master Plan, there is a section that lists all the plans for Slate Canyon Park. And the proposal is to remove the second bullet point, which reads, consider all of city-owned land at Slate Canyon and evaluate select parcels that may be suitable for residential development and utilize proceeds for park development. Last week in council work meeting, there was a motion that passed unanimously to send this amendment forward in the process to get it passed in a council meeting, which requires us to hear it tonight in a planning commission meeting. Any questions?
Any questions for staff? Yeah, Matthew. You can go.
My question is, so clearly when this happened, I think I'm in agreement with why we're doing this, but when we did this, there's a reason that that was put in there. I'm wondering how we address why now that this is coming out, there's clearly a funding gap. Like, I'm wondering what what the alternative is now, because the city won't have any funds from allowing or selling land to make park development improvements.
Thank you. I can't speak to exactly why each council member and specifically want to move forward with this. However, in in previous occurrences, there has been this has been seen, this bullet point has been seen as like an invitation to certain developments. For example, the Splash Summit development to propose large development in in parks like this. And though removing this bullet point from the master plan will not completely prohibit any development in the plant, in the park in the future. However, having this removed would minimize the, I guess, at least as it was said in the work meeting, it would minimize the potential for large developments to come out to show that their proposals are justified with the general plan.
So I think I understand, I think I understand that. But I think I, in my mind, at some point, somebody put this in because the city felt like, hey, we're gonna need some funding to do all these things that we want to do in the park. So by taking this out, are we finding funding elsewhere? Are we allowing some other avenue for improving the park? Because that's what I'm really asking. Where where's the funding going to come from if it's not this?
Great question. As what was discussed in the work meeting last week, they didn't mention any other plans for funding a park.
Lisa?
I would also have a concern about that because I have already seen bullet point number four has basically been tossed out because the water tanks aren't flat. And they can't add any more concrete to them. So I feel like this is the not the only one that based on conversations, looks like it's not going to be addressed or not going to be happening. My question originally was, is there a map for this? Is it necessary in the general plan to have sort of a visual that shows what you consider to be Slate Canyon? Are we talking all the way from the state hospital all the way down to Buckley Draw? Or are we just talking? Are we talking like the water diversion areas? Are we talking up on the hillside above the Bonneville Charlotte Trail? I think it would be helpful to know exactly what you mean by Slate Canyon. Because I think most of the neighborhood outcry about the proposal several months ago was the hillside, the view from the distance. And there's a lot of low lands in there that would support a park that would be conducive to being adjacent to a park. So I don't actually have a problem with that still continuing to be part of the plan, but maybe to a certain point. I'm just wondering. So that was a lot. Is there a map? Is there some sort of delineation of area?
So there is an official boundary for Slate Canyon Park, even though there's not like a playground or anything there, that's still technically a city park. And there is a map. And I spoke with G I S. And they also made a map which shows those boundaries. It has thirty percent of less than thirty percent, greater than thirty percent grade. And it has lines divided city parcels that would potentially be soluble.
But is that the park boundaries or the area of Slate Canyon that's that you're talking about?
The park boundaries.
Because in my mind, the park boundaries don't really matter as far as this goes because they're not going to be sold. Right? They're still slated for the park. So I'm talking about the stuff adjacent to it that is not going to be developed as housing or any commercial development according to this wording. Where would you? How do we say what those properties are that are included?
From my understanding, I've the the wording that's listed here in the Parks and Rec Master Plan is just regarding the properties within the boundaries of the park.
That's weird.
Yeah, that seems odd since they own the entire park. So why do they have to designate city-owned land? But anyway. Any questions over here? Okay, thank you very much. You're welcome. So the city is the applicant, so we've already heard them. So we will now open this to the public portion of this. Are there any neighborhood or district chairs present? Okay, please come forward first. While she's coming forward, each person that comments will be given a certain amount of time. District chairs will be given three minutes. The public will be given two minutes. And at the end of your time, your microphone will be muted. So.
I am the district vice chair, so if that makes a difference on my time, I'll let you adjust it. I was involved when there was oh, sorry, Catherine Hall, District Two Vice Chair. We were very actively involved when there was a potential for Slate Canyon land to be sold to a developer. If you were here for that meeting, we had the largest district meeting ever on record. Most people spoke out against it. I think there were two or three that spoke in favor. We are concerned as a neighborhood about the parcels around what is designated as the park. Little disappointed that, lest somebody from Provo Parks is here. I don't see them. But we did work with Provo City Parks and Rec to design a potential layout for that park, and it does include the flatlands, which you might think would be conducive for housing, but it does include that to put tennis courts and different things. There's massive infrastructure issues up in Slate Canyon where we've got Enbridge and Rocky Mountain power lines and things like that that make it unsuitable for developing for houses anyway. So the way the park we were looking at designing that, if that goes through, we're looking at grants and other funding to help put that through without having to rely the city to rely on selling the land and developing medium density or high-density housing that's surrounding it right now. So just this neighborhood doesn't want more housing up there, number one. And number two, there are other avenues for funding that park. So I mean, we are looking at grants to help. We're just the district two members, but we're looking at helping. We've stepped up. We've tried to do that. We've been giving money to the park each year for different amenities, so we're willing to do that and go beyond and do other grants as well to help get that park in. But it's because of the infrastructure that the park is not in yet. It's because, and I don't know if you guys how much you know about that, but the water retention ponds have to be rebuilt. They're not adequate right now. That has to happen before the park can be built. So that funding has to occur first. So hopefully that answers some questions. Welcome to clarify anything if you want me to.
Okay, thank you. If we have questions, we'll call you back up at the end of public comment. Okay, so we'll open it to the general public now. Each person may make one comment. Please begin by stating your name and city of residence. If anyone would like to comment, please come forward now.
My name is Angie Carter. I live in Provo. I'm also on the District Two Board Committee, Neighborhood Board Committee. I just want to echo what Catherine has said. Now, the neighborhood really would like to keep this area as open space. And that is what the neighborhood would like. We are very concerned about having additional housing up there. If you've seen Buckley Draw issues that have been happening over the last few months, there's been a lot of controversy about why that's been happening. And trying to develop new housing up here is gonna add, we think, to that controversy. So for right now, we support the removal of this line item in the master plan as long as it's not being replaced with something worse than housing.
Thank you. Any other comments? Okay, not seeing any, we will close the public comment portion of the meeting and bring it back to the commission for discussion. Any comments, thoughts? I think for me, the city council unanimously wants to do this. The neighborhood supports it. It's a plan, so it just says the city's not interested in looking at this right now. I think it's pretty straightforward. Any other thoughts or comments? Yeah, John?
I tend to agree because it's focused on Slate Canyon Park only, then I have no problem with this.
Yeah, it seems like there's a little to be like, given that my understanding of the history, there's a little bit of buyer's remorse with this particular clause. So we're looking at south in the south area. I think when the county released some land and Provo bought it and they developed that as a like fifty-five-plus age community. And they took some of that money and he's, I mean, it's been folded into and an entire purpose was to help expand bicentennial. But it seems like at this point now there's a fear that it will get worse or or not what they bargained for. So is that is that the sense from the council and the commission members? Is that? I don't want to misstate anything, but that's my sense that there's a community that the community wants to roll it back a little, rein it in a little bit more.
I think it's Slate Canyon Park has been very low on the totem pole as far as funding goes, and so it keeps getting pushed aside. And there was a contingency several years ago that said, you need to start paying attention to Southeast Provo. And you need to do what you said you would do here. And I think this is something that the city came up with as a solution for how it could happen because the funding was never going to be there, you know, it'll, when we get funding, we'll do it. When we get funding, we'll do it. So.
And then now there's unintended consequences.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. I don't have a problem with this, other than I would really like to see exactly what the Slate Canyon area is defined as. So I could, I would feel comfortable moving this forward to the municipal council, but I would ask that there be some sort of visual that says exactly what the Slate Canyon area, that was air quotes, sandy for the minutes, what what the Slate Canyon area is defined as, because I think that's really important. If it's just the area that's close to the parking lot or that's delineated for the park, or if it's everything all the way up to Third South and all the way down to where?
Right. I, I think, I hope you don't mind me just jumping in, but I, that's my, I those are my thoughts too. My concept of Slate Canyon Park is just at the mouth of Slate Canyon, but I think I think the community in the neighborhood has a perception of, no, Slate Canyon's really from, I don't know, Y Trailhead or State Hospital all the way down, like you said, to Buckley Draw and and so we might be approving this and that's fine, but it's you'll have a case where the neighborhood is gonna say, whoa, whoa, wait, I thought this was protecting some of these other lands to the north and to the south.
I mean, I think for me, it's a little less necessary to define it just because we're removing this, and so it's like it never existed. Right? And so Slate Canyon not being defined, well, it doesn't exist anymore. It's not there. And I think what the city was saying is it doesn't prohibit the city from looking at selling lands they might own in the neighborhood. It's just saying this isn't part of our plan because they're getting developers coming and saying, this is in your plan. You should let me do this kind of thing.
That's a good way of looking at it.
Any other thoughts? Are we ready for a motion? Who would like to make that motion? We all love making motions on this commission. Thank you.
Okay. Make a motion that the planning commission recommend approval of the proposed general plan amendment to the Provo City Council. It's a text amendment to appendix E to clarify intent for city-owned land around Slate Canyon Park in the Provost Neighborhood.
Do we have a second for the motion?
Seconded.
Thank you. Any discussion on the motion? Okay, we'll begin voting on my left.
Aye.
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 And I vote aye, so the motion passes unanimously. Let's go ahead straight to item two. Sandra White and Donna Hall request annexation of one point nine nine acres of property into Provo City, located at fifty-four eighty and fifty-four ninety North Canyon Road, North Timfue Neighborhood. And Jessica will present this for us.
Yes, thank you. As mentioned, the property owners are requesting to annex into Provo City. Annexing into the city allows them access to Provo City Police and Fire. Right now, they would have to get access from the county sheriff or county fire department. And it will also and lower some of their taxes, also gives them opportunities for more range of development in the future. So that's just kind of addressing the main reasons of why they're wanting to annex in. Both of these lots already have a single-family home on them, and they are currently seeking to be annexed in under the agricultural zone, so the A one-one zone. This this annexation area is part of Area Five for our annexation policy map. The one condition of approval was that they have an annexation agreement signed. That's just mostly a concern from Public Works as this is a developmentally sensitive area. To say that if they do develop, they'll have to be aware of the impacts that will have on utilities and infrastructure. Neither property owner is actually seeking any redevelopment at this time. So the next steps for this annexation is to have city council approve the ordinance and we get it certified by the state. If the owners at any time do want to seek any development, further development opportunities, it would have to come before you in the in the form of a rezone application. And then it would possibly have to come back as a project plan, depending on the size of what they want to do. That's that's pretty much all we have. I'm here to answer questions, and the applicant is also here to answer any additional questions you might have.
Great, thank you. Any questions for staff? Joel?
Does this align with our land use goals for that annexation region or zone five?
Yes, yeah, the the Northeast Neighborhood Plan has this area. It's it's a little bit less dense. This area was residential agriculture. This is just coming in as A one, so it makes the the lot size half an acre larger. But generally speaking, this is aligning with the the purpose of the area.
Yeah, is there any hillside overlay on this, on these lots?
No, we have not put in the requirement of the hillside overlay for these two lots.
I have a couple of questions. First, can you expand a little bit on that annexation agreement? What's the sensitivities for development area that they're agreeing to?
With these lots, it's not as sensitive. Your next item, item number three, is another larger annexation right next to it. That one has a lot more development sensitivities. Those ones will have to factor in water tanks. I think with this one being the proximity of of such developmentally sensitive area, it's just more of a covering our bases approach than
Right, okay.
a general concern of there would be a lot of impact.
Okay. And it says it's coming in as A one point one. Normally, it's O S P R, right?
Correct, yeah, that's the default.
Can that happen straight up or does it need to come in as O S P R and then get changed to A one point one?
No, it does not have to come in as O S P R.
That's just the convention.
Is just kind of based on working with the applicant and what makes sense for the area that is kind of honoring the history of the area, the history of use of the area.
Any other questions? Matthew?
I guess I'm confused on this. What'd you call it? An annexation agreement? Aren't those things that they? Aren't those things that they, any developer would have to do, I'm, I'm, I guess I'm confused about what an annexation agreement. Causes them to do differently than they would do in the normal course of. Rezoning and coming before us and city council and all of that. Can you help us, help me understand what, why that's needed?
It's, uh, it's not. An absolute must for every annexation, um, in this case, it was a condition that. Public Works put on the, the CRC review that they wanted to make sure there was this extra layer of protection for. Ensuring that that information was out in the public, because the annexation agreement also gets recorded on title, so anyone who sees it could see. We have some general concerns about development. That's, that's for the most part why we're, we're doing that.
So as we've, I assume we've done this before, what kinds of things actually get documented in an annexation agreement?
Very often they're referring to limitations on infrastructure, especially up in this area. Public Works wants people being annexed to understand, there's not unlimited water or sewer infrastructure. And when you go to redevelop, they're not proposing development, but when they go to redevelop, understand, we're giving you a warning. There's limitations on infrastructure, that's primarily what Public Works is trying to achieve.
Okay, thank you for the clarification.
Lisa?
Um, I'm just wondering, since we have several items that are similar tonight, can you? Tell us why areas five and six were delineated separately on the map, the annexation map?
Yeah, the, the biggest delineation is. Area six is predominantly owned by federal government. So. Basically, we wanted to draw a relatively clean line of where federal government is, because the likelihood of them initiating an annexation is. Minimal, uh, and also the likelihood of us, because of the, the hillside and slope in that area is minimal.
Okay, thank you.
Matthew?
I have a question, and I, I think it's appropriate, but maybe it's more appropriate for the applicant themselves. The, the next item is an assembly of lots of parcel owners, I'm curious if there's a. Important reason why this is not part of that larger parcels annexation plan.
Um, speaking from a staff perspective and. Maybe speaking on behalf of the applicant a little bit. Uh, it was a lot easier to have just these lots come in as agriculture and still have the rest of the area. Coming in with the different zoning, um, the other annexation is, has different intentions.
Okay, any other questions for staff? Okay, thank you, Jessica. Okay, um, the applicant is here tonight, did you want to present anything? The item, where's the applicant at?
Um, my name's Sandra White. We have no, neither home has any, any desire to develop. We love our property, we love growing orchards, we love growing gardens and farms, that's why we live where we live. We've, those houses have been there since seventy-four. So, fit over fifty years. And we just decided because we are landlord. Provo City, um, the Water House. Gillespie Waring is at the west side of my property, on the north side of my property is the Provo, um. The Pioneer. Well. It's that property is part of this city, and on the other side of Halls is Scott Smith, and he's part of the city, so we're just kind of a. Little island, and it was time to annex, and we were doing that before we knew anybody else was. We applied a long time ago.
Great, thank you. If you can just hold for a second, any questions for the applicant? Okay, excellent, thank you. Okay, so now we'll open it to uh, the public comment portion, are there any neighborhood or district chairs present? Okay, not seeing any, we'll open it to the general public, just as a reminder, um, you'll have two minutes to make a comment. Um, the microphone will be muted at the end of that time, um, and this is a time to make comments, if you have questions, we ask you to direct those to staff. So I invite you forward at this time if you have a comment to make. Okay, not seeing any, we will close the public comment portion and bring it back to the commission for discussion.
I just have one question of clarification. Jessica, did you say that the minimum lot size for the A one zone is an acre?
Yes.
Cause it's one point nine nine acres, so.
Correct, there will be one lot that is non-conforming, um, but that would also be the case if the property came in as open space.
Okay.
Uh, so we're.
So we don't need to worry about that, okay.
Yes, Matthew?
Uh, I just say it's part of the map. The city's been planning on this, we're putting a little extra. Uh, limiting factor or note, notice, I think this makes sense.
As they mentioned, they're an island, right, so. Any other thoughts? Okay, are we ready for a motion?
I'll make a motion. I move that we. Forward a positive recommendation to the municipal council. For item number two. Um, requesting an annexation of one point nine nine acres of property into Provo City located at fifty-four eighty and fifty-four ninety North Canyon Road. In the North Timview Neighborhood. With the condition that an annexation agreement is signed prior to the ordinance. Being approved.
I'll second.
Thank you. Any discussion on the motion? Okay, we'll go ahead and begin voting. Joel?
Aye.
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 And I'll vote aye, so item two passes unanimously as well. Hey, item three, Mandy Madrid requests annexation of approximately a hundred and forty-four acres of land located at approximately fifty seventy-eight. North Canyon Road. Um, and who will be, Jessica will be presenting this one as well.
Okay, um, so this item is again for another annexation of a hundred, approximately a hundred and forty-four acres of land. Uh, the current conditions, there's a mix of undeveloped land and some properties that already have existing single-family dwellings on them. Um, the applicant will be seeking future development opportunities after this is annexed in. So the, the recommended annexation is zoning. Entering the city is owned, open space or OSPR. Um, this is pretty much finishing up the entirety of our Area Five and some of our Area Six. Uh, of the annexation policy map, and again, as it was stated and added into the condition of approval was. To have a, uh, an annexation agreement. Uh, signed as, as part of this annexation process. Um, and again, similar to item two for the annexation, our next steps will be to have city council approve an ordinance. Um, and have the state certify, and then this, they will be seeking future development opportunities, so. After the annexation has been certified and recorded, they'll be coming back to you with rezone and um, concept plan as well as. A, a project plan. Uh, the applicant has been made aware of this process, and so they're, they're getting ready to have those, those documents ready. And applications submitted as, as soon as they're available to submit them. Uh, and the applicant again is here to answer any additional questions that you might have, um, but do you have any questions for me?
Great, thank you. Any questions for staff? Yeah, Joel?
What was the proposed zoning for this?
This one will be coming in as our open space zone.
Matthew?
So again, about this annexation agreement, anything different that we would expect to be on this one? Because it's larger, or kind of the same idea, we want to emphasize that there's some restrictions in place based on utilities.
Yeah, this one um, is gonna be a little bit more detailed. Most of the language will be, will be similar, but it is a little bit more detailed, um, and it's also including a. Rough concept plan of. Just for informational purposes, this is the goal of what our development will, what we're aiming for with development. Um, but that concept plan is not binding, it, it's just informational to the annexation agreement.
Any other questions? Okay, so I have one question real quick. Um, we have several annexation requests tonight. Um, you say that development is planned, but we know nothing about that, I'm guessing standard procedure for annexation requests. Is to not consider any of that, just to see if making this part of the city makes sense.
Um, correct, so the, the applicant has been working with the city and discussing opportunities and getting. Likely scenarios, it's, nothing has been hard and fast, it's more just. Making sure that their general idea of why they're annexing is feasible. Um, rather than saying, oh yeah, if you annex in, this is absolutely what is going to happen. Uh, but we want to make sure that we're on a similar page for the expectations of after they are annexed in.
Are there any downsides to annexing land if it doesn't work out and it just stays open space?
Um, not really, um, annexing into the city does give them a wider range of zoning options. For if they want to change how their, their desired development, um. Looks or, or turns out. Um, in the city is still a pro for them, because it does give them more options than remaining in the county.
Great, thank you. Any other questions? Okay, thank you very much. Go ahead and invite the applicant forward at this time.
Hello, everybody, I'm Zach Hartman with Land Advisors, and I represent the lender that foreclosed on this property, is losing lots of money and. Selling it to somebody else, um. I've really enjoyed working with Provo and the staff and the neighbors, it's been like a sitcom that we could make a movie about. And I'm pretty excited to see how we can fix, there's a lot of. Adjacent landowners that have had kind of legacy long-term issues and problems, and I think we'll be able to. Patch a lot of stuff and make it a little better, and we're. We're gonna be losing money through this process, that, you know, making money is not really our goal, our goal is exiting as a seller. Um, we have a buyer that's here tonight, and I'll be here throughout the process to make sure hands, that it doesn't change while we're going through the process. And I think we've been pretty diligent in talking to the neighborhood, and I think we generally really understand the village plan that you guys approved about a year ago on the site. And that's our intention is to follow that spirit and feeling, you know, it is an agricultural area, it's not super dense. And there's certain areas that you can build on, and certain areas you shouldn't, and so we kind of, I think we understand the restrictions of the area. And I honestly feel like we feel really comfortable with, uh, you know, with the city of Provo. In having a good outcome when we're done with this, so. Can I answer any question?
Okay, thank you. Any questions for the applicant, Joel?
Um, what are some of the restrictions you're running up against, just remaining as county land, what, what are the benefits for you guys that? Makes it advantageous to seek this?
I don't have to be shifty. Right, like, when we originally came to the process and we kind of reviewed what people wanted to do, it, it seems like people in the past. And this is, this might, this is just how we, I came in late to the game. It looked like the idea was, let's get something vested in the county, then slide in and use the good parts of Provo to cover it, right? And uh, we kind of saw that as like. Not the approach we would want to have, and so I, I talked to the lender, I said, look, we just gotta go straight forward, we gotta, and at the same time. That we had foreclosed, you guys had just approved the Northeast Village Plan, and I was like, look, this is the perfect layout, it's a good way to exercise this, we don't need to stretch. Um, you know, let's just follow the plan and we should be pretty comfortable with the outcome.
Can I also ask, uh, um, I see there's a neighborhood meeting held, and that. About thirty residents in favor, four against, do you know what some of the pushback is?
Sure, in one of our concept plans, there were some townhomes, right? And we were following the spirit of the village plan for the missing middle, and that's why they were designed there, that's actually a financial loss for us, I'm happy to take them out. Um, but we were trying to follow the spirit of the plan.
Lisa?
When you say the village plan, is this actually a development that we've approved previously, or is this the Northeast Area Plan?
I'm using the wrong words?
I don't know.
Uh, yeah, he's, it's the Northeast Neighborhood Plan.
Okay, okay.
That won't be the first time I mess it up.
No, that's, I, it's just like, I'm racking my brain going, I don't remember reviewing a plan if it's in the county anyway.
I, I know the Trivial Pursuit person I've had on my team, I've been watching, so, good catch.
Thank you.
Any other questions for the applicant? Okay, thank you very much.
This is gonna be fun, thanks.
Okay, now we'll open the, uh, the public por- portion of this meeting, uh, are there any neighborhood district chairs present? Okay, not seeing any, we'll open it to the general public, each of you will have two minutes to make a comment. Like to comment on this item, please come forward now. Okay, not seeing any, we'll go ahead and close the public comment portion and bring it back to the commission for discussion. Matthew?
So, uh, I was actually the district chair at the time that Zach came to one of the meetings over the summer. Um, and I would add that generally everyone was very positive, but there was a strange concern, because it was in the, the neighborhood plan that there should be some. Mix, um, and that was the primary concern, is why do we have townhomes up on that hill? And Zach, as he just said, was clearly willing to take them away, and I'm not sure if that's the right, I mean, we'll address that later on. Um, but really, the, the, I'll say the, there's some history that I wasn't. Very familiar with at a past plan that didn't work out very well. And Zach's approach, and there were plenty of neighbors that are part of this annexation, not just district neighbors hearing about it. That are so excited to be part of the process rather than, I, I'll say negatively affected by consequence. Um, and so I'm, I'm in support of this, it's in the, it's in the map, it makes sense, we're gonna put some extra constraints on it in terms of what. They need to know for coming for, you know, proceeding, um, but I think it's a good idea, good plan. His approach with the neighbors has been really constructive.
Great, thank you. Other comments?
Mister Chairman?
Yes.
Um, in the almost sixteen years I've been here at the city, I think this is the third time somebody's tried to annex this same area. On the previous two um, attempts, there's been very strong opposition to it. I think the difference this time and why there's support is that, in that intervening time between the second and third annexation attempts. The neighborhood and the city worked together on our neighborhood plan, and the developers expressed his willingness to simply follow the neighborhood plan. I think that has made a huge difference.
Great, thank you for that information. Are we ready for a motion?
I think it's important to note that. Like Matt said, that. Just because the neighborhoods, neighborhood said we don't like. This mixed use, it's still in the neighborhood plan, and possibly a goal in the general plan as well, so. I wouldn't say, just because they didn't like that at the meeting, that that's not something he should still. Try and incorporate, because that is an important goal to have throughout the entire city.
Although also as stated, that's a future.
That is future, it doesn't affect my decision, I'm totally in favor of the annexation, but I'm just gonna throw that out here as a. It doesn't mean it's wrong.
Yeah.
To try and meet the goals, there's a reason we have a plan, so.
Great. Okay, who wants to make a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Great.
So I move that we recommend approval to the municipal council for item number three. Uh, Mandy Madrid requests annexation of approximately a hundred forty-four acres of land. Located at approximately fifty seventy-eight North Canyon Road, North Timfue Neighborhood. And that we uh, recommend a condition of an annexation agreement attached to that with the municipal council.
Do we have a second?
Seconded.
Thank you. Any discussion on the motion? Okay, we'll begin voting.
Aye.
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 And I'll vote aye, so item three passes unanimously. We'll now move to item four, Gardner and Associates requests annexation of thirty-eight point seven nine acres of land located along Lakeview Parkway. From approximately three hundred north to eight eighty north, and uh, Hannah will present that for us.
Hello? Uh, just as we're getting started, we did receive two more public comments from Natalie King and Neil Thornock. In the same vein as the others that have been received, we just want to make sure that you're aware of the volume of public comment coming in. As has come up several times tonight with the other annexations, uh, the decision is not whether. Uh, it should be developed or how it is whether Provo City should be part of those future development discussions. If the city does annex these parcels, then any development would have to go through several steps, everything with an asterisk here also includes a public hearing for public input. Which should be considered as, we are exploring the future of these parcels, should they become part of Provo City. Um, we have spoken with Public Works, there are no plans for development here that we know of, but development would be difficult and expensive in the very high water table. In this area, there are somewhere on our aerial maps, you can even see the water, the groundwater seeping up from below, so. Development is not off the table, but know that it would be very difficult, again, this doesn't have to have a bearing on what's being decided tonight. Just offering a roadmap for different possible options, um, if the property is annexed and not developed. Um if the property is annexed and not developed, then the city has robust relationships with conservation networks locally. And the council and our legal team have just been working on formalizing some of our processes for that. So we can have a more formal conservation effort again, should these plans or should these lands become part of Provo City at a future discussion. This is about thirty-eight point eight-ish acres. Uh they're referred to as the SS Minnow Annexation right along the uh Lakeview Parkway. Uh it is, as you can see in the map on the right, already in one of our city annexation areas in area four. There are multiple parcels here and multiple property owners that all signed the petition. They are represented by the applicant George Bills, who is here. Within this uh area four on our annexation map, it does specifically say that lands in this area, if annexed. Should come in as our open space preservation recreation zone, OSPR zone, which is actually more restrictive. Than the county's current residential agricultural zone, which does allow for residential development. With this OSPR zone, if the land were annexed, then the land would have to go. Or the developers would have to go through the public hearing process of a normal rezone. With again, the public input, uh which would not be the case if these were left in county lands. Were this annexed, it would go to the Lakeview South and Fort Utah neighborhoods whose boundaries there is the river. So mostly Lakeview South to north. Any questions?
Okay, thank you. Questions for staff, John?
Yes, um is, um from your point of view, what is the benefit to Provo of this annexation, this proposed annexation?
Benefit to Provo? These are lands that are adjacent to sensitive wetland areas. But the biggest is that the sheer volume of public input and discussion about this shows that these are properties about which Provo residents care a lot. And if these properties are annexed, then Provo gets to be a part of what the future of this land looks like.
Thank you. Joel?
Um i- if it is annexed in and it's OSPR, um and a rezone comes in. What kind of restrictions is the city able to put on um development to be sensitive to? Um I guess the the wetland preservation of this area, like are we able to make ecologically sound? Restrictions on any future rezones or are we kind of stuck like you get what you get?
A lot would be constrained by water tables, public works. What they're able to find is geologically sound in this area for building. Additional concerns could be addressed through development agreement, but it would really have to depend on what kind of development is being proposed here.
Lisa?
Does the OSPR zone allow for anything that's not already there?
It allows for open space and recreational uses, and that's it.
So somebody could decide they want to build a boathouse or something, but, and that would be allowed under the code?
I'd have to check the exact code, but I would, I, I hesitate to be on the spot. I'd have to check the code, but I would be surprised.
It sounds like that would still be in line with what people are worried about, though. They don't want houses there.
Any development would require wetlands delineation. We'd have to go through that process.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for staff? Yeah, Matthew?
So just to clarify, if we don't annex it, they could, if I understand, RA five is. One residential unit per five acres in the county as it currently stands. And really the issue is we wouldn't have zero control over what that looks like, but someone could do that, which means that. Almost forty acres, they could do eight homes, eight lots kind of thing. Well, we wouldn't have any say in it potentially.
Yeah, the the five is, you're right, it's this one single family home, but with a minimum parcel size of five acres. That's where this five tends to be. But uh yes, it would have the current status quo development rights of the RA five zone.
Right. So by us bringing it in at this new zone, we basically said, you can't even do that. And we get to be part of the process for whatever it becomes.
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, let's go Melissa and then Joel.
That was my question, actually.
Great.
Um I I was just wondering if any of this is currently delineated as wetland?
We have it marked as wetland. Most of it is marked as wetlands in our JS mapping software. But we don't have any current official delineation on it because we don't own it. It's not part of our jurisdiction.
Gotcha.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
We'll now invite the applicant forward at this time.
George Bills with Gardner and Associates, Provo, Utah. Um I don't think there's anything I can add to that other than what has already been said in order to. Right now, all we're doing is annexing the property in. Anything we decide to develop in the future has to come back through. Uh Planning Commission, but it also has to go through engineering for their review and uh oftentimes they'll tell us the studies that we need to do. It also has to go through Planning Commission or Planning and Zoning uh to meet their needs, so. Uh but at this point, uh I I don't know of anything that they're planning on.
Great, thank you. Questions for the applicant, John?
In a similar vein, uh what's the reason why you, why your organization wants to annex this then?
Well, I think over time, when that road went through and then the property, um which would be to the south. Uh down by Provo High was starting to come in and it looked like there's a potential for some housing coming through there. I think that's one of the things they were looking at. Um I don't know where that project is, if it's, if it is going to be housing and if it's gonna move that way, then we'd like to be part of it. If it's not, then maybe nothing, maybe the boathouse.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for the applicant? Okay, thank you very much. We'll now open the public comment portion um of the meeting. Are there any neighborhood district chairs? Present, not seeing any. Um we'll open it to the general public. Please come forward at this time if you'd like to comment on this item. Each person may make one comment and you'll have two minutes to make that comment. Okay, not seeing any. We'll close the public comment portion of the meeting and bring it back to the commission for discussion. Yes, Lisa?
I have no problem with this, this, uh having an extra. Screening opportunity for development or not development seems all the safeguard that we need to make sure that this. Stays used how it should be used, so I think it's a great idea.
John?
Uh I'm in agreement. Um we've read through the public comments, understand their concerns, share a lot of their same concerns. But I think this actually gives us more control of what we'd like, so we can have a say over what happens in this area. And make sure that's preserved and managed the way we want. So I'm in favor of this.
Yeah, along with that, I know there were many comments made in the neighborhood, several of them we got by letter, um which Hannah mentioned, and we have read all of those. But the way it's coming in and what the plans are, it appears like this actually helps us mitigate those concerns, right? Um and and follow through with it. I did look it up as well. I found a state map that had wat- wetlands designations. And the vast majority of this is wetlands, and so to develop would have quite a high hurdle. Um you know, engineering standards, but also wetland mitigation kind of things that have to be done. Um so I'd be, I'd be surprised if I see anything in the near future. Matthew?
I I think I agree with that, but I assume all those maps were created before Lakeview Parkway. Which I imagine has made quite a different, quite a change to the, to the actual use of that or consideration of that. And so I guess what I wonder is, and maybe I'm potentially surprised that we have the ability to do an annexation agreement. Is this, could we tie something to an annexation agreement about what kinds of studies or what kinds of things? Or or do we just say that's all gonna happen naturally and it'll be okay?
Joel, would you like to comment on that?
Those studies are already required.
So because they're already required, there's no extra?
I don't think so.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, it's interesting. It it is very wet there. Um I live right by there and I walk by there frequently and. I mean, I don't know what having a road go through, it may have to do with the designations, et cetera, but it is, it is wetland. Still, in fact, perhaps maybe even wetter because it now can't drain where that road is, right? So may actually be worse. Any other thoughts? Okay, are we ready for a motion?
So I'll make the motion here.
Great, thank you.
Um I move that um that we recommend approval of the annexation of thirty-eight point seven nine acres of land. Located along Lakeview Parkway from approximately three hundred north and hundred north.
Okay, do we have a second?
All second.
Okay, any discussion on the motion?
Just to clarify that it's eight eighty north. I heard eight hundred, so I just wanna make sure.
Thank you, eight eighty north.
Any other discussion on the motion? Okay, let's go ahead and start voting.
Aye.
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 And I'll vote aye, so item four passes unanimously. Let's go ahead to item five. Jared Morgan requests concept plan approval for a twenty-six unit townhome development. Over one point three two acres in a proposed MDR zone located at one thirteen and one ninety-one North Geneva Road. And Dustin will be presenting that for us.
All right, thank you very much. So yeah, this property here is the one that uh was read in. Uh that the applicant is looking to um develop. So it's currently. Uh this area is one point three two acres. It's currently in the general commercial CG zone. Um the concept plan that's being proposed here. Uh to revell- redevelop this site is for residential townhomes. Um I'll zoom in here on those. Um so it's a twenty-six unit uh de- development. That's gonna be at a twenty units per acre, which fits within the MDR zone. The parking for it, the requirement would be fifty-nine parking stalls. And sixty are being provided. So that's about two point three per unit. Um as far as uh the unit layout, so there'll be eighteen units with two bedrooms. And eight units with three bedrooms. And then there's gonna be in those eight units, that'd be live workspace. Uh so office area. And here's a rendering of the uh concept for these townhomes. Um this would fit within the the MDR building height, which goes up to forty-five feet, so this would fit within there. And then as far as the rezone goes, um the request is to change from the general commercial that it's currently in. Um to the median density residential or the MDR zone. Our general plan there on the left uh shows that the desired future use of this area. Um it would be for mixed use type development. Now, so we've been hearing a lot for some time about keeping the commercial that we have on the west side and. And a need for, for more. Um so the existing zone is commercial and we would um like to try to keep that. Um seeing a reduction in commercial would kind of go against what we've been um working towards, so. It's, it's often more challenging to add commercial in as opposed to um. Residential as far as zoning goes, so with it already being zone commercial, I think that's um something to. Remember also on this location, so Geneva and Center Street are both arterial roads. And so this is a um, you know, a prime location, I think, in on the west side of Provo for commercial as well. Um so. Um staff's not supportive of changing it to a residential zone as it doesn't comply with the general plan or. Or what we've been um working towards on the west side there, so staff's recommending um denial on both items five and six.
Okay, thank you. Um should I read in item six and discuss them together? Should we keep them separate?
Yeah, we can do them both together.
Okay, so I'm gonna go ahead and read in item six right now as well, so we can just discuss them together. Uh item six is Jared Morgan requests a zone map amendment for one point three two acres of land from the CG. Zone to the MDR zone in order to develop a twenty-six unit townhome development located one thirteen and one ninety-one Geneva Road. So with that in mind, they're now both on the table to be discussed together. Any questions for staff? John?
Yes, had a couple of questions. So what's currently in the, in the, what's, what's the current land use right now? Um commercial. So I believe a cabinet shop in there currently. Okay, um the um. So one of my questions is, I know we've been talking about wanting to make these commercials, so. Um it seems that some of the adjacent properties, you've had a hard time getting commercial in there. Is there reasons that we know why, why it hasn't been attractive to? Other commercial operations there?
Um it's just more, more challenging when you have residential already there to then um try to rezone it to commercial with residential there, so. Whereas on this one, it's already existing, um and it is adjacent to residential. Um I guess that's kind of what I was pointing out is that the commercial use is already there as opposed to trying to come back in later. Um and add commercially and would be more challenging.
Okay, thank you.
I think, well, I think one thing he might have been referring to is the fact that the corner lots on both sides of Geneva there are currently commercial vacant. At least one of them has had a for lease sign for quite a while. Do you know what the challenges are to bring in commercial there? And is the market telling us something?
Um yeah, I mean, I think it's market driven, so you know, as time um makes it more. Desirous to have that there, I think that's. What would drive it more is, is that market demand. But with that said, I think we know from experience that having that commercial is gonna help support residential and everything there that the. The city goes have, so while maybe right now it might be um not as prime as it will be. But as we see the west side continue to develop, um that those sites are gonna be more and more uh desired and needed.
Okay. John?
So just a related follow-up question then, is it possible that if this were to become a, the, the twenty-six unit townhome development we're talking about? Would that make, would that make those adjacent sites commercially more viable then?
Um I think it would, you know, adding commercial depends on the type of commercial that it is. Um if it's something that, you know, residents are gonna be walking to and things like that, then um having more residential there, but. Um immediately adjacent to the site, there's, there's quite a bit of residential coming in. Um currently on the other side of Geneva there. Um so I think that's gonna help with that component to help bring in some more, so.
Okay, thank you.
Mister Chairman? Right, that's like two hundred and twenty-ish units coming in across the street, right?
Yeah, two hundred and.
Two hundred and six, something like that.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, Daniel?
Yeah, do you see uh regular lot sizes or lot frontages or disparate owners? Is that part of, part of the reason for, I guess, not a vibrant development atmosphere at that intersection?
Sorry, say that again.
Yeah, so I'm, I'm just looking at the aerial here and you see the different lot sizes, they're different shapes, different sizes, different frontages. Um how much of that is playing a part in the, the lack of, of a vibrant development hub?
Yeah, I think, you know, the smaller lot is, the more challenging it, it probably is gonna be to build the, develop it and um. That's the dollars, you get the parking and everything that you need, so some of those uh maybe over time are gonna work together and maybe combine parcels to. To do something larger.
So anytime there's multiple parcels, that's gonna hinder development because you have to tie up multiple parcels to make something happen. On the other hand, that depth off of Geneva Road has got to be over two hundred feet, which is a pretty ideal depth for commercial development.
For parking lots, et cetera.
Right. In answer to the question about rooftops, Mister Lyons asked, certainly rooftops always help encourage commercial development. But after we approved, after you approved, six or seven hundred more dwelling units down on South State Street. We thought that might help drive some commercial. So with that information, we went out and marketed the commercial land down there. To commercial retailers and it made no difference largely because it was attached housing. It was seen as lower discretionary income, and so it didn't seem to be threat, meet thresholds that retailers were looking for.
Hey, Lisa?
Can you tell us, uh are those attached um townhomes in the RC zone to the north?
Yes.
And then single family above that?
No, those are actually fourplexes in those buildings.
Okay, so fourplexes and townhomes is what's adjacent to this property on the north, okay.
Excellent. Any other questions for staff? Okay, thank you very much. Okay, we'll go ahead and invite the applicant forward at this time.
Thank you. Uh, my name is Jared Morgan. Um, with Albion Development. Representing the family that owns this, uh, these two parcels, uh, this evening. Families here um, as well. Um, infill projects are, are challenging sometimes, especially in a growing city like Provo. Right, the, these properties are, are few and far between. Um. And so. We're, we're always very mindful and careful about how we design our developments. Um. Um, about fifteen years ago, I wa- I was a downtown Provo neighborhood chair. Um, I actually was the uh. I, I, I founded Downtown Provo Inc., which um, Quinn Peterson now manages. And at the time, you know, downtown was coming out of a. Challenging time. Very challenging, right? And John Curtis, the mayor at the time, and, and myself and a few others, we created Downtown Provo Inc. And we. I sat on, I sat on a selection committee with, maybe Bill will be the only one that remembers these names, but. Dave Oka, um, Paul Glauzer. Those guys, we, I sat on a redevelopment committee. And. We were identifying parcels within the downtown area to um. Revitalize. Um, the Los Armanos parking lot was, uh, was one that came uh, onto our plate. We sent out an R F P and. And we ultimately landed on the development you see today, sixty-three, sixty-three East, um, sixty-three Center. I actually left Downtown Provo Inc. and finished building sixty-three Center. Um, which I think, I think it's. Providence, I can't remember the name of the retailer on the bottom, but. Great development. Um. The reason why we chose that development was. We needed. We needed density to justify. Um, having a better retail presence, presence downtown. That was the first um, new build coming out of the great, coming out of the recession. The sixty-three Center, and then Pig Development did a few, and. Now we have some real nice critical mass in downtown, and I think retail is doing well. Um, you know, Quinn Peterson spoke to, uh, to that um. Recently, um, on the phone with me. So critical mass is, is important. Um, density is important. When you have a, when you have a mixed use area like this, which I'm. I. I'm in favor of mixed use, um, mixed use plans within. Neighborhood communities, like Ninth and Ninth in Salt Lake is a great example of that. I think it's, I think they've done a good job. Some of the concerns that we had when we were exploring mixed use. Was. The viability, the viability of retail right now is, is challenging in this area. And a few of you have already spoken to that tonight. The viability of, of uh, of retail on this parcel specifically is, is challenging. And so when we brought the plan to um, city staff. I actually first sat down with Jessica. In February. And there are like two paths forward on this development. Move forward with a mixed use and have some density and, and some retail. Or move forward with a medium density residential. Um, which you approved across the street. And um. You know, the site plan that you saw tonight, that's iteration nine of our, of our site plan. We've gone through. Many iterations of this with city staff. David Day sat down with us and was very, was instrumental in helping us kind of map out. A, a, a good uh, site plan for this M D R zone. So there's been a lot of work already done with this, and I think that. From, if you look at it from a highest and best use. It is our personal opinion that what we've presented to you this evening is the highest and best use for this property. Um, the linear feet on Geneva Road, there's not a lot. It's a deep, it's a very deep lot. And um. We just felt like the market demands for what we've proposed, they're, they're there. We have for sale product there, we have for rent product there. And we feel like we're, we're hitting those market demands. We did not feel like there was adequate market demand to bring retail to this area. So that's why we presented what we did. We're not opposed to collaborating further and finding, finding uh, the right. The right fit here, but we feel like uh, what we have uh, what we have given you, we've put a lot of thought into it. And I think from an N, M D R perspective. Um, it's compliant. And that, that feels right, so. That's why we've arrived where we are. Happy to uh, continue the conversation. I was excited for this conversation tonight, frankly. It's because I have so much history in the city and. And so um. Yeah, happy to take any, any questions.
Great, thanks, thank you. Melissa?
I just have a couple of questions. You, you mentioned that the people that own this property have more than one parcel?
There are two parcels there. You can actually see the second parcel outlined in light green there.
The little tiny parcel right here.
Oh, I see, okay, and um. You said, why, uh, you said the vi- the viability of retail is challenging in this, on this parcel? Can you explain that a little bit better? What do you see are the challenges?
So the biggest challenge um. Is in the mixed use zone. You have to have a minimum ten thousand square foot footprint. For any retail commercial. And for this parcel. That um. That is very challenging. To, to be able to bring density and. And a ten thousand square foot footprint here. From a parking perspective, it's very, it's very restrictive. And so when I first met with Jessica. And we were talking about these paths forward. You know. We would still have to go through some type of variance um. To be able to accommodate a little bit smaller retail footprint, because it's a ten thousand square foot minimum. And so. That's probably the quickest answer to your question. Um, Ms. Kendall was just. That, that, that. I felt like that uh. That was too restrictive for a parcel of this size.
Um, you also said that there wasn't adequate market demand for retail here? Can you explain that a little bit more too?
Yeah, I mean, neighborhood infill retail. I mean. In, in most counties throughout the state of Utah is, is challenging. I know that this area has been through a lot with retail. I know that they lost out on the Smiths across the street. And. And I know that the Walmart's going in further down and. And I, so I understand that. That there's maybe a lack of amenity in, in this area. I think. Mr. Hill touched on this. There. There's, there's a reason why things haven't really happened here. And in my opinion, it's, it's because there's not enough density in the, in the area to service it. Bill actually touched on that as well in a different development, so. I think critical mass will, will drive that, but. We, we need, we need more density. Um. There's about a twenty percent vac- vacancy rate right now in retail, and I mean, Salt Lake, that's a Salt Lake County number, that's not a Utah County number, but. It's just a. This is already kind of a high-risk business. And that's just not a risk that uh. We felt like we were willing to, to take right now. Unless we could get a. Approval for a smaller footprint. Which we could look at, but that's not, that's not, obviously that's not what you're seeing tonight, so.
Any other questions? Matthew?
So there's some parcels adjacent to you, uh, normally in real estate. Right, you've got one point three two acres. At least doubling that, combining and doing something even better with a good floor plant, with good layout and plans. Any conversations with any of these other owners? Uh, any thoughts on what they're gonna do or what their appetite is? Because once we go away from. You know, once we approve this, well, then the next fifty or hundred years, it's this. We've, we've, we've lost any opportunity to add. Commercial, so I'm just curious, what other conversations, or what you know about the neighbors there?
Yeah, we've, we've not had discussions with them yet. We've uh, we had to talk about that with the family and. We felt like we wanted to kind of be in control of our own destiny here. Um. I think that. Assembling, having an assemblage would. Make this easier. But. It's a. You know, th- this, this property's been in the family since the sixties. And. You know, they're, they're ready to. They're ready to rejuvenate the, the area. I, I actually think this is a. An awesome opportunity to. Redefine and, and, and beauti- beautify the area, so I appreciate what the family is wanting to do. And that they, they wanted to, they wanted to try and pursue this uh. Within our two respective parcels first. If, if. If there's a, if there's a bigger plan and more conversations we can have, we're open to that, but. You know. We're just trying to control our own destiny right now, so.
Joel, did you have a question?
Yeah, just a detailed plan on the, on the uh. On your concept, if you don't mind, the um. I'm noticing that a lot of the parking has arrived through these tandem garage concepts. And I, it raises a red flag for me, recognizing that if. If in reality that's not used for two cars, because it's hard to get the second one in and out consistently, then there's additional. Parking needs, and I look at Geneva Road as the only option, I wonder is that gonna be a problem?
Um, so can we pull the? Can we pull the site plan back up? My chance. Thank you. Um. And Dustin, correct me if I'm wrong, is the tandem? Where did he go? Is the tandem parking being um. Allocated into the overall? Yeah, so that's being calculated into the sixty total. Stalls. Okay. Yeah.
It shouldn't be. Because it's twenty-six units, if you're counting. Driveway as one of them, then one inside the garage. That's already almost sixty.
Okay, thank you.
I didn't, I didn't think it was, because when we, when we spoke, it was um. It's at, it's the dri- the driveway is the other parking spot.
But that's still tandem, right? So that's really three cars in a row.
Uh huh, right. Yeah, I've actually seen this model and it works really well. Um. The, the dark blue, tho- those are a little bit larger units, and we do have a live-work. Unit on the bottom floor, so it looks and feels more like retail, but it's a, it's a live-work flex space. So that was our attempt to um. You know, bring. Bring uh. You know, an aesthetic, a retail aesthetic to it. Um, and I actually really liked the live-work unit spaces, and I felt like this was a. A good fit there. Did that answer your question?
Thank you.
Yeah, Joel, did you have a question? From earlier?
Uh, yeah, I, I guess I'm still just kind of curious, what? What is it that's making it so challenging to drive a mixed-use option? Um, I'm hearing the challenges with getting retail. Are there any other site constraints that are? That are really making it difficult? For this lot in particular? Like, yeah, it does kind of feel like once. Once you lose some, it's just gonna make it more challenging for future parcels to develop. And then it, yeah, it just kind of kicks the can down the road.
Yeah, I mean, I guess it was site-specific, like our concern was site-specific, maybe not like the area in general, I think. I think mixed use, you know. Could eventually work, but. This site's just challenging, particularly with the ten thousand square foot minimum. So that's really what drove us. That, that was prohibitive for us as, as we were, as we were making this plan. That's what drove our decision.
Thank you. Matthew?
So. Now that you've called this live-work, and I've built live-work in other places, I'm not sure how a. I want to say ten by twelve-foot office counts as live-work? Can you tell me what you envision? Working there?
I mean, I, I walked them, I mean, I walked these exact units in Salt Lake a couple of weeks ago, and. You know, it, there's, yeah, they're not, they're not large, it's not a large unit, but.
So what, what is it? What do people do in a, in a work?
Office space or salon or. You know, other type of like small insurance agency. Small neighborhood. Commercial. I mean, it's, it's, it's one office. So.
Any other questions for the applicant? Okay, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
We'll now move to the public comment portion of the meeting. Um, are there any neighborhood district chairs? Here? Okay, we'll open it to the general public. If you'd like to comment on this. Item, please come forward at this time. You'll have two minutes to speak.
Hi, my name's Sue Ann Adams. My father bought this property back in nineteen sixty, and to address the issue about. The traffic is going down. Geneva Road is extremely busy. And that parcel is very narrow and very long. So for them to have any type of commercial thing going in there, I just know that even for ourselves, pulling out of that parking lot. Is really treacherous at a lot of times, especially during rush hour, which seems to be all. All the time now. So I don't know if you live, if anybody who's driven in that area or has lived in that area. That. Corridor is extremely busy. The other thing I wanted to point out is, we, Jared may not have known about this, but we actually did um. Approach the corner lot to see if we could make one great big huge section out of that. There are a couple of homes there that are not willing to sell at all. And so we're, you know, we tried to wait them out for a little bit, but we see that that's not going to happen. The people who are in there right now are, are. Probably gonna be there for some time. And if you notice on that corner lot, at university, I mean, at Center Street in Geneva. There's multiple ways for people to get into that for, for commercial use, and it's also a much bigger lot. This lot is only one, a little over one acre. So to do any type of um, commercial or mixed use, it takes a lot of footprint, but it also takes a lot of frontage, because as I mentioned. It's very narrow, but it's very long, so it takes out a lot of that frontage area, and I can only imagine the congestion. Of getting in and out. Any questions?
Hey, thank you.
Thanks.
Corey, Provo City. Um, so I, I really do like what Matt said, like, once we lose this as commercial. Then it's gone forever. Um. It, it honestly feels like it's kind of dying over there, and if we just keep throwing up apartments, there's gonna be nothing driving people to uh, to our locations. Yeah, so we just, I do like what Matt said, where if we lose this to, you know. You know, if we lose this commercial parcel. It's, we're stuck with it. Um, there's gonna be nothing else driving. People to our. You know, our part of Provo, so. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Uh, Tyler Frizzell, oh, sorry. Tyler Frizzell, uh, Provo City. Um, I'm in one of the uh. Lots that's kitty-corner to this development, and my concern is just with how high it is, being three stories, is privacy. Also, there's already a major development. Um, complex, that's under construction right now across the street. So just to add on to what's already been said, congestion is a big concern. That's it.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, sorry, can I have one more thing?
Yeah.
Also during the summer, the sports park. Across the field is a joke. To find parking, it gets really packed. That was my last thing.
Hey, thank you.
Hi. Rachel, just voicing my concerns as well with everything that's been said. Um. West of the I fifteen needs more commercial. Um, once this is gone, there's. Less of a possibility to. Bring in commercial and support our community.
Okay, thank you.
Rachel.
Okay, any other comments on this item?
Hi there, uh, my name is Daniel Martoma, I'm a BYU student. Um, I'm, for full disclosure, I'm a Springville resident, uh, but. I do have uh, concerns on highest and best use. I, uh, I guess I have a question really posed to staff, if they've uh, heard from the applicant, if. Uh, the. Applicant uh. Has considered uh, an affordable housing-type product uh, for this use, uh. That, that would be my uh. That, that would be my uh.
About that.
So uh, just looking at the zoning map and the uh, future land use map, I, I. Understand that commercial was designated as that highest and best use, but. I could see rezoning it to allow for a more affordable housing type product, so. If I could get, maybe get some clarification on that, if that's been communicated to staff or. Uh, something of that nature.
Thank you. This is for comments only, but we'll ask that question later. And thanks for your patience with the microphones.
Hello, can you hear me? Okay, yeah. My name's Sam Bergerson. I'm also a BYU student. I'm an Orm resident. Um, looking at this location and where it sits on Geneva Road as well. Um, and there being a lot of agriculture in that area as well. Um, I think looking at previous developments with the temple going in a little bit further down the road. And a couple of giant apartment complexes, that there is an opportunity cost to that, that space is running out and where. Um, that commercial building space will be best used. I'm looking at just across the street from this um. The proposed development, um, there is uh, a, a, a greater opportunity for that location as well. And so I think some of the question maybe is less of, should we build more um, residential here and maybe why? Is there such a hesitancy to build commercial space already when things are already zoned in that way? Um, so maybe, and, and my opinion, um. Maybe there hasn't been conversation had between owners between each other first before coming in, just being like, ah, we want to look out for our own next. Versus let's think about the city and how we can develop the city together. Um, so I guess I would just say, I think that maybe there's a little bit of a jump of the gun. Um, instead of looking for different ways to approach this um, specific parcel of land.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments? Okay, not seeing any, we'll go ahead and close the public comment portion and bring it back to the commission for discussion. What are we thinking? Daniel?
Well, I kind of wanted to ask during the. Public hearing portion, but I didn't know how to introduce it, but I'm curious with the, some of the BYU students here, what? What their ideas would be to. Uh, to bring in commercial in, in some of these areas, because the way I look into the city. Uh, we zone areas for general commercial and different types of commercial uses. We try and do it along um. Appropriate corridors. Um, you ask any business, they say, well, I want a certain traffic count. They, they're looking at traffic count numbers. Uh, road widths, accessibility, all these things. Um, but as much as we try to. To set the table for businesses in these areas. Um, we can't make them, you know, we can lead a horse to water, can't make them drink. Um, so I'm curi- and I. I did planning like twenty years ago and so I'm not as familiar, but I'm curious what um. What, what they see is, is current. Uh, policies or ideas or trends they see where, where you can. Um, you know, help the city along with that, because I, the, the biggest thing we hear from the public is. West side needs services, west side needs services, it's under. Just a lack of commercial opportunities, some, even something as simple as restaurants or. Um. Grocery store, of course, but. Um. It hasn't been in the areas you wanted. And so I'm, I'm, I'm curious what they might say. I don't know if we. Want to reopen public comment or, or if, if there's a response or if we could recall, if, if, I'm curious.
Do you like it now or should they just come talk to you afterwards, tell you how it is?
I, well, I'm sure you can, I know our provost economic development director. Is open ears. So if any of you ever wanted to contact him. Uh, the, he's the open door kind of person, I think.
Yeah, I mean, I will back up as a resident of the area, commercial's been tough out there. Um, I mean, to the extent even across kind of on the north or the southeast corner. Um, was a Wendy's in conjunction with the seven eleven and it went out of business, like you couldn't even handle that. Um, there's a subway there that has very low traffic, um. And I'd never wait in line there, basically. Um, coffee shop that gets some business, but it's, it's tough. I think a big part of it is even though it's on arterials, most of the west side is still not developed yet. Um, there's still a lot of open space and the interesting thing here becomes sequencing, because if we wait a little while. Then, you know, that, those places are getting interest for development, et cetera, and then maybe we will have enough to justify commercial and so. Where's that balance? Um, I also think, you know, I think sometimes we don't appreciate. The division that I fifteen creates. And so residents out there will be like, what are you talking about? It's the middle of town, there's houses to the east, there's houses to the west. But houses to the east can't get there very easily. They have to go up to eight hundred or deal with the center street off ramp mess that's there. Um, and it makes it very difficult to draw customers from that other side of I fifteen. And so even though this feels central, it's really on the edge, right, of a barrier. Um. And so, yeah, so this one's hard for me, trying to think, how do we balance? Making sure we have commercial, not just for today, but for in ten years when most of the area is developed out and built out. Um. Balanced with how much commercial can this area actually support and is this just going to stay? Uh, unused or underutilized for a long time, because we're, we're expecting too much out of it, right? Those are the questions in my mind right now. Other comments, Matthew?
I think those are all very fair and appropriate comments. I. I'm torn, honestly. I normally I'd say, hey, yeah, I can appreciate the research, the. The market will bear this, they won't bear other things, that's why we're here. But at the same time. Carving this one off makes the other parcels probably less useful. Um. One of the main concepts in urban planning right now is this idea of centers. So State Street is a poor example of centers. It's not, it's, it's like a center got stretched across miles and miles and miles and what we have here. Is really, I'll say, three corners, maybe four that could be that. But you're right, it's probably, it's not now. I can appreciate why this is coming here now, because right now you can't make them work. There's probably a time when they will and carving this one off makes, will make those less value, less successful. And, and so I'm a little torn on how to approach that, but I, I think this is a pretty good development. I like the look of it, at least. Um, I can appreciate that it's achieving something for these owners, but I do think it is a detriment over time to what we hope will happen. At this intersection.
Yeah, I think that's right on. Um. My biggest concern probably is, do we hurt the ability for the adjoining parcels to have good development, right? We talked about frontage. If you combine the two parcels or the two adjacent ones, there is good frontage, but now if you develop half as townhomes, now the other one just has that same problem, right? Um, I love, actually, I think they did a really good job at fitting things onto this land well. I think the live work flex space is actually really intriguing and interesting. Um, and almost creates kind of a mixed use feel if it really could be a salon. Or a small barber shop or something like that, right, in that space? Um. So I think the development is good. I'm just worried about the externalities on the neighboring. Uh, lots here. Yeah, and then Anna have to.
Can I ask Mr. Wright, if those properties were combined? What kind of, it's hard for me to judge what kind of commercial could go there. How big is that? What? What kind of footprint could be put there?
All the par- parcels down in the corner? Um, yeah, I think it opens the, the door quite a bit to different uses in that. Because they're all in that same CG zone, so there's a list of um. Different retail, commercial. Um, uses in there, so the more space you have, the more flexibility you have in, in designing something um, for that specific site.
So how, how big could you get? What kind of big thing could you put there?
Um. Top of my head, I, not sure, but I would say whatever's listed in that zone. Um, that makes sense uh, for that area. Things that are, you know, daily needs for those residents around the area, I think so. Some you, you'd probably want to see there, um, restaurants, things like that, that uh. Are kind of lacking currently on the west side and then, and then thinking, you know, in the future as it starts to build out. Um. You know, what that center can be, um, or what it can become and how it can better serve the area, so like. In planning, we're looking at, you know, when we create a general plan map, we're. We're looking at the whole west side and, and saying, okay, we're designating this area for residential, this area for this. And yeah, these centers, these mixed use opportunities. Um, will help play a role, whether, you know, it's in. Ten, fifteen years, it's hard to tell exactly when that's gonna, when all the development's going to catch up. Um, but being mixed use, there is that residential component allowed as well, where. Uh, those rooftops can help support whatever that commercial is, so. Um. Just increasing the size by combining those parcels. Uh, does open the door to, to more development um, opportunities, but.
Miss Kendall, that entire corner from. The subject property's north boundary down to the corner is about five acres, which is a pretty good size for neighboring commercial uses.
Yeah, Anna?
I just, I'm thinking one of our jobs on planning commission is to think forward and we have a really good. Neighborhood plan that took everybody a lot of time. And this has been talked about and talked about and I kind of like just trusting in the plan. That we've already decided on, we really need that place to grow well and part of our job and our charge is to make it grow well. So sometimes when we have uh. People come up before us, I'm, I'm sympathetic to what they're saying and their needs to, to produce money or to turn something over now. But as the city planners, our job is to look forward and to think of the entire city. And so in this incident, I mean, in this instance. I feel like we should leave it in commercial because I'm really hopeful about that west side. Really hopeful about that airport. I'm really hopeful about this place becoming a lot nicer on that, on that side and that center street that goes on out there.
Lisa?
Um, I've been making a list of pros and cons as we've been listening, so the things that I like about this development, so this would be specifically for item five. I love the facade appearance. I think it's a nice looking building, set of buildings. Um, I like that it's got the live workspace, but I don't think that goes far enough. Um, and then things that I don't like, I think that the single wide garages and single wide driveways are a bad. Mess, there, that would be a mistake. I feel like it won't really be used as the parking that it's. Um, being numbered as, um, even though the second tandem space in the garage hasn't been counted, I just. I see so many people don't use their garages anyway, that we really only got space for one car in my mind that. That's going to get parked because nobody likes to have to move the other car to be able to get out. Um. The amenity space is not enticing to me, um. We didn't actually ask for clarification about what it was, maybe it's not just a lawn, but I don't feel like it's very creative. Um, it is the last opportunity for commercial space in this good location, not the, it is a lost opportunity, um. The MDR zoning is too high of a potential density, as was mentioned in the staff report. But LDR is even further from our mixed use and um, general commercial goals, so that doesn't seem appropriate either. The townhome density, as was stated before, doesn't seem to draw retail, so we, when we talk about rooftops. I don't really think that's going to help the commercial situation by having more townhomes.
Especially twenty-six.
Yeah. And um, I think collaborative development with adjacent owners would be much more successful now. I know that hasn't been in the past, but I'm with. And, and. I think that this isn't the best possible land use and I would be inclined to wait for something better. Um. One thing I thought of, just in, in a brainstorming thing, is like a vet's office or a dentist's office. On the street um, side with access that's um, planned in. To the other property, so if they don't want to do something collaborative, maybe think smaller. And just plan for the future, like we've done in some other areas where there's a driveway that comes out of the south end of the property that keeps those properties connected. To make it a, a bigger project as, as time goes on, if they wanted to not wait for the others to be ready to develop, that would be a suggestion.
Other thoughts? Yeah, Joel?
Yeah, I, I think everyone's brought up some really, really good points. Um, I also feel kind of conflicted, like. We're holding a property owner hostage, um, when, I mean, this area is owned commercial and we have essentially light industrial out there. Um, it's not getting very productive use. Um, and I do think it's important that we're forward thinking and we're looking ten, fifteen, twenty years in the future, but. Um. I don't know, I, I also hate to see this area that's. You know, we're saying it's prime commercial, it's prime commercial, it's in just the right spot, but. No one's bit for a long time and are we going to hold property owners hostage for another decade until someone's willing to play ball with them or, you know? So, yeah, I, I feel pretty conflicted on that front too.
Lisa?
I think it's important to remember that part of the reason that the commercial didn't take off here. Was because that giant partial, parcel um, to the east of Subway was leased by Smiths and so nobody else. Could be that person because they, they were holding it and. And so who's to say that if they hadn't been holding it, that it wouldn't have happened the way we envisioned it? And so I don't know if we can really say, look, it's been vacant for this long, therefore nobody wants to go there. I think it might be that it's been vacant. This long because somebody was holding it hostage and now we need to start the timer and see if we can get something there, but. That could be wrong. It's just, it's just important to remember that it wasn't really vacant, someone was intentionally tying it up. So.
John?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions for staff. Um. The, I forgot the proper term of art for it, but the uh, properties on Geneva Road that have that, that office. What would it take for someone that, that would, that was in that property to be able to use it as a commercial space, such as a salon or a. Or a insurance office or something? Is that a viable option or would that be difficult to happen there?
In the concept plan? Um, yeah, so in the MDR zone, um, they'd be able to apply for like a home occupation license to do.
So that would, that would be viable option. Second question is, has there been a neighborhood plan done for this area?
Yes.
Oh, there is. So this is the neighborhood plan for commercial, okay. Okay. Yeah, my, thank you. My thinking is, I'm also torn that uh, for some of the same reasons that have been mentioned previously. That I am, I am sympathetic to the owners about getting fair use for their property. And taking one point three acres away from a potential five acre lot is a lot, but it's not everything. It's not the corner, so you, I'm, I'm trying to weigh that as well. The um. I am concerned about Geneva Road traffic and about. Uh, that many more cars on it trying to get in and out just for the safety, the difficulty issues there. Um, I'm concerned about um. You know, what will happen? The, I like the apartments across the street in place of the Smiths because there is. Uh, mixed use space in front, so it could, there, there's hopeful much commercial that will come there and hopefully that will then. Drive additional commercial on this corner, but I'm in the quite torn that is that. Because a four acre lot is still a decent sized lot for some commercial there as well on the corner and that's more, more attractive than this is in, in a little bit. I, I like the idea of um, revitalizing that area. I think the, the. The plans from my view would look nice. Of course, they always look nice in a plan form, you see reality, but uh. In terms of what's there now to replace with something like this would help that neighborhood somewhat. I think it would be more attractive for a commercial there for that reason. Um. But I don't, you know, is, is not the right term. I'm actually quite torn on this.
You had their hand up over here.
Yeah, I'll.
Daniel and then Anna.
I'll echo uh, Commissioner Jensen's comments. Um, with two just quick additions. One, I'm not concerned about traffic with this proposal. Only because if there was commercial there, it would be probably more intense traffic, so, but I'm, I'm okay with that. Uh, and the second thing being the. I, like, I'd be inclined to. To go with staff's recommendation that this application uh, be denied. Uh, the thing that would move the needle for me was this. It meant some other purpose in our general plan and one of that is uh. Owner occupied. Uh, homes. Or properties. Um, and, and I know in the, the staff report, the. Uh, says the applicant stated they plan to sell some of the units and rent some of the units. This ratio has not been determined. So if it meets, if, if, if this proposal met some other stated. Articulated goal in the general plan, then I, such as homeownership, then I would, I would be inclined to approve it.
Might be enough of an improvement to the plan to change it.
For me, it would, yeah.
Yeah?
I just wanted to point out that I.
I just wanted to point out that I I don't agree that the land is useless right now or that we're holding it hostage. It's being used now and it's a commercial property. So I don't think that premise is a good like foundation for the argument that we need to move forward because of a sympathetic view towards somebody's property. You know what I'm saying?
Yeah, can I invite the applicant forward real quick? Um, couple of questions for you following up on this. Uh, do you have a ratio of um purchasable versus rented units kind of worked out at this point?
I mean, we were going to sell the the uh Geneva fronting units would be, those, those would all be for sale units. We want them. If it's a live workspace, we want them to be able to be there more permanently, so those units are for sale. And, you know, we had I don't have an exact ratio, but those units for sure are for sale units.
Okay, so at least eight.
Yeah.
Actually, and then also that ca cabinetry shop that's there, is that open currently closed? What's the status?
Um, vacant.
Come on up.
I have the landowner. I do have one more question, though.
Yes, my uh my brother inherited that. My brother's turning sixty five this year. The business is failing. Of course, when my father had the business, we didn't have LOLs, we didn't have Home Depot, we didn't have all of these, you know, to go cabinet stores. And so as a result, not only is the business failing, but the buildings themselves have been built for six sixty years, they're also failing. So I see that if something, you know, we'd love to hold on to the land because because somehow we feel very sentimental about it and we'd love to build something there that would improve the, you know, the area. You know, we could easily sell it to a big developer and as I said before, we have approached the neighbors to the south of us. They're not willing to sell, they're not willing to 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 collaborate with us. And we still have those two homes in the center facing Geneva Road that are not willing to sell. So, you know, I sense that if we don't get something the business, you will just see a crumbling building waiting for the commercial. As, you know, you're hoping ten fifteen years and like I said, we're not getting any younger. All of our families are in our sixties and seventies and our grandchildren or our children are not interested in in pursuing it. Most of them live out of state. So, yes, the business is open, failing, and my brother is looking to retire.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. Joel? You're good. Okay. Um, I'm gonna go ahead and allow you to come and ask that question you had.
Thank you. Um, I've been, I've been getting mixed um messaging tonight, so I just want some clarification. Can you go back to the the uh general plan, well, image? So currently is on commercial, the general plan shows mixed use. We've heard that people want this to remain commercial, but the general plan is showing mixed use. Can I just receive a little bit of guidance on what's desired here? Because from, from a mixed use standpoint, right, like, that's a mixture of residential and commercial. If we're being asked to pivot on the design, we need some guidance on on that. Um, because, you know, we that that that's what this business says. We, we collaborate, we take, we take advice and we we make some course corrections, so you know, I just would like a little bit more direction on uh on on commercial or mixed use. I'm seeing this mixed use and and I, you know, I just need some clarification on that.
Thank you. Actually, do you think that's an important point? So any thoughts on that from the commission here?
I I'm I'm curious what the director and staff would have to say about that.
Well, certainly one thing that has influenced the staff is that for the last six months or so, we've heard very loudly from the west side that commercial opportunities are being um taken away by losing commercial zoning. We've been criticized pretty harshly for the rezoning of the Smiths site, even though we tried everything imaginable to get a Smiths there. Um, so we've become very sensitive to uh commercial uses of commercial land, so that the staff's preference at this point would be commercial. In fact, I would recommend, depending on how the city council rules on this, if the city council thinks it'd be should be commercial, I would suggest that we amend the general plan to send that message rather than the mixed use message.
Please come, please come forward. Oh, I want.
I just want to mention that only one of those properties is is being used as as a woodshop. The other one is a residential. It has a home on it, a three bedroom home.
Yeah, thanks.
I guess all.
Yeah, go ahead.
I would add that, you know, in a perfect world, you would be allowed to do something really great here in preparation for connection. Can't remember who's who suggested, maybe Lisa, that there is a relationship to what comes next in the properties to the south. And so to answer, to give the, I guess, a little bit from my point of view, the feedback is, whether it's commercial or mixed use, it's that commercial component of the mixed use that I think we all are really caring about for on behalf of the citizens of the this kind of west of the freeway area. And that there's this opportunity here because of the corners, because of location, to do something great. And so I guess from my point of view, the feedback is prep for something great that's connected to that, not so. I mean, this, this plan, uh, if you want to go back to the other, to the, to the site plan, that has very little, I mean, I guess the driveway is up against the property line, so it gives some flexibility, but that means it's pushed all the way to the other properties, which we already heard a neighbor, you know, with a little concern with people looking down into their backyard. So I just think maybe from my point of view, the feedback would be come up with something that clearly plays to this five acre future that could work really well. I guess that's my thought.
Okay, are we ready for a motion?
I can make a motion for item five. I don't, it's based on my personal feeling that it's it's got some good ideas, but I don't think it's I would approve, I don't want to approve it, so um I'll make a motion and we'll see if anyone agrees with me. Um, I move that we deny the concept plan for twenty six unit townhome development over one point three two acres in a proposed M D R zone located at one thirteen and one ninety one North Geneva Road in the Fort Utah neighborhood.
I will second.
Thank you. Any discussion on the motion? Okay, let's begin voting. John?
Aye.
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 Nay.
Aye.
And I'll vote nay. So the motion passes to deny, fi uh, how many overs are there? Eight, so six to two. Okay, how about a motion for item six? We need you, Anne.
Well, I'm just thinking that um based on our discussion, we're sympathetic to the idea of having something that's not exclusively commercial. But I think that because the concept plan is tied to the rezone, I would also recommend denying the rezone until we have a concept plan that we think is great. So I don't think we're saying we would be a hundred percent opposed to something. I think like Mr. Willwright said, that we're we, it's not, it's not the right thing yet. Whether that means timing or whether that means switching up some of the uses or the layout or something, but um, that having been said, I will follow my previous motion with a recommend recommendation to the municipal council to deny item six. Um, the zone map amendment for one point three two acres of land from the general commercial zone to the medium density residential zone in order to develop a twenty six unit townhome development located at one thirteen and one ninety one North Geneva Road in the Fort Utah neighborhood.
I'll second.
Thank you. Any discussion on the motion? Yeah, Joel?
Would it be useful to share our reasoning um if we are voting to deny? Uh, just provide the applicant with some direction on what we do envision the space being.
I whole articulate my, I'm gonna vote no on on this to recommend it, but only only because I I didn't see a homeownership component in the first one, so I approved the concept plan, but I'm denying the zone amendment.
Okay, so if we were listing, it would be homeownership. Um, I would like to see a little bit more diverse um mixed use to to lean more towards a commercial, something that would be conducive to the parcels to the south connecting and being being useful together as a commercial overall, an asset to a neighborhood.
And that could be in my mind, um, a larger commitment to the live work concept. I think a twelve by twelve room is not a big lean into the mixed use. Even though there are eight units there, I think having a little more substantial, if that's the the goal and that accomplishes something, I I could get in favor of that with some uh, I'll say intentional connection to what could come next.
I think we might also want to consider that a live workspace may require parking, so maybe parking requirements need to increase with the combination of the tandem style parking and a space that may have one or two clients coming or that will need something somewhere to go.
Yeah, I think I agree with that. Um, intentional connections. I'm pretty flexible on what shows up there, but it does need to have some sort of mixed use or commercial. I'd be okay with either of those, as long as in either case it could tie into future development.
Um, meaning that they would have access to the southern property with a roadway.
Yeah, I think for me, the bottom line is, uh, I think Anne brought this up earlier. The general plan has something different and I need to see a clear better thing where I'm like, wow, that's better than what we thought of in the general plan. I just don't see that yet. It hasn't gotten there. So, um, although I approved the concept plan ma or voted that way mainly because I thought they actually did a pretty good job for a townhome development. I've actually known people with tandem garages and they they worked for them, so.
Um, I, if I can add one more comment, Jonathan, I I think uh it's also worth maybe staff looking at. Uh, there was a comment earlier made um by the applicant that that the minimum ten thousand square foot was a little bit prohibitive. Um, I I'm curious if there's more flexibility of that, if we'd see more mixed use application. So I think that's worth exploring.
Yeah, I don't know how frequently variances are granted, but maybe that's one that's worth exploring if that's what it takes to make mixed use happen on this lot.
Yeah. Yeah, I'd be more willing to consider variance in this case than a full change of direction.
Yeah, and I think something like the live workspaces does get more towards that mixed use. Um, yeah, if it was a larger mix of the housing instead of, yeah, just the ones fronting Geneva.
Well, yeah, I think for me, it's the size of that office inside it, too. It feels a little more substantial. Okay, so comments are made. Hopefully that gives applicant direction. Yeah.
I I just feel a little more inclined to agree with Mr. Peroni that this should stay commercial and that we shouldn't even try and chop it up at all. This is big enough for actually a medium store, medium sized grocery store. Trader Joe's would fit here.
Interesting.
So, I don't know. I think.
You just gotta get those other owners to sell, right?
Exactly, but time changes things and you cannot get it back. So I feel like a little patience is probably a good idea here. And they could probably work on those neighbors and at some point, everybody's gonna get tired of the traffic there and they'll all get together and it'll be good for everybody.
I think it's important to point out that the access to the entire potential five acres is best suited coming through this property, so that's why it's really important to keep it further away from the intersection and to tie in whatever they propose with that in mind. So not saying that you would have to wait for this, whether you decide to do that or not, but that you think about that so that it doesn't make it a whole bunch of separate parcels, but eventually we'll we'll work together with what comes later.
That is a good point. Um, you want to get those driveways as far away from the.
Far away from that intersection.
Okay, let's go ahead and start our voting. John?
Aye.
Aye.
Sorry, can you remind me what the motion is?
It's to recommend denial to the municipal council.
Okay, thank you. Uh, aye.
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 Aye, and so uh item six recommending denial passes unanimously.
I move that we adjourn.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
That gets.
Second. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.